Remember what it was like to be a kid? To explore and play? To roam free all day? In Jamestown, North Carolina, we get out of the grind and escape into the moment. People feel good here. Eat well here. Feel swell here. We go for a ride or an afternoon stroll. We cheer each other on. Hear a treasured history. Meet the energy of a town on the rise. In a place with true heart and soul. And where we have our own special beat. Jamestown, North Carolina, where history...
The court please call the roll.
Councilmember Randall?
Here.
Councilmember Rayburn?
Here.
Councilmember Burgess?
Here.
Councilmember Wolf?
Here.
Mayor Montgomery?
Here.
All present. Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Please bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Counsel, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add under new business, item H, resolution of appreciation for Pam Purchase.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Nancy, do we have anyone signed up for the first public comment period?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I'm Tanisha Dukes. I live at 6424 Rogers Farm Road. I am standing before you today because I am also a candidate running for North Carolina House Representative for District 59. Why does this matter to Jamestown? Because Jamestown has now been redistrict into District 59, which makes it about the fifth or sixth municipality that we have within our district, which means that on the state level, the focus that I have is advocating, one, for our public schools that are within District 59. I am a former educator, assistant principal within Guilford County. Also no stranger to Jamestown because I started my internship with administration at Jamestown Elementary School. And so definitely an advocate for that, but also an advocate for our economic development and what that looks like within District 59, what that looks like to bring money from the state level to our municipalities to ensure that there's job creation, to ensure that whatever we can get that sustains our communities, we will have an opportunity to be able to do that. There is more on my platform and statements, but I will not take more time than I have. And so you can find that information at dukesfornc.com. I have cards. I'll sit back and hold tight, but I also have another meeting, but I am truly grateful that, for the opportunity to stand before you all.
Thank you so much for being here.
Congratulations.
I just want to warn everyone, Tanisha was in charge of my son's education for a bit, so just be careful.
Do I have any...
If you know my son, you know what I'm talking about.
Do I have anyone else, Nancy?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Paul, where are you? There you go.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Here tonight about a text amendment to the solid waste ordinance. The town attorney has requested a change to the language in the solid waste ordinance that's presented to you. It's in your packages. The, I believe it's in blue text, it's the new version, and it is struck through on the original language we have. The gist is the same, we can abate a nuisance under the law, even on private property, and this is using language that is directly from the state statute.
Okay. Any questions for Matthew?
For Paul? I just had one thing, Paul. I do appreciate, I know in talking with some town staff, there's been a big effort to make the language more inclusive in our ordinances, and that's pretty much throughout here. I just noticed, one, at the top of this, do you need to comply and notice when an official of the town finds a violation of any provision, provisions of this ordinance, he shall notify the owner or occupant of the premises? I was wondering if we could just change it to they, like, like is consistent throughout the rest of the document?
Yes, if it's part of the motion.
Okay. When we get there, we'll make that part of the motion. Any other questions?
I'll wait till after the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open the public hearing for anyone who would like to speak regarding the proposed text amendment. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion and return to counsel. Counsel, do you have further discussion?
Yeah, well, Paul, I'm sorry, sit back down. What are some examples of this violation? I guess my concern is, but I guess legally, do we've got the right to go on private property to remedy a situation? So what would an example be?
Well, from time to time, like, let's say, back in the fall, we had some severe weather. There were some large piles that were put out by contractors, which by policy should be carried away by the contractor. Some of those got out of hand. This language would give us more enforcement with that. Sometimes someone may move out of a house and leave a lot of material at the street, and if we don't get them picked up pretty quickly, they tend to grow. So those are probably the two most common ones I can think of.
Okay. That's, okay, that's stuff at the street. That's not going on in somebody's yard.
It could, it could be very similar. I mean, that would probably initially be handled by enforcement, some type of enforcement action from the planning department originally.
Yeah.
And then, then we would be contacted if we see it as a public health or safety issue.
Like yards, grass that gets 10 feet tall or something, and we, but you try to notify the people, the owners, obviously, do all you can to notify them before you would go onto the property and then charge them.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Yes, we always have.
Okay. Any other questions for Paul? Do I have a motion, Counsel?
I move to approve the new language to the solid waste ordinance with the suggestion that I made of changing the one he to they to be consistent with the rest of the document.
Do I have a second?
I second.
It's a roll call vote, Nancy.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Rayburn?
Aye.
Councilmember Burgess?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And moving on to new business, Scott Coakley, would you introduce our Eagle Scout and the project he has prepared?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. This young man approached me probably about a month ago about wanting to do an Eagle Scout project and had several ideas, one of them, which was already popular with an individual, and I thought it was a great idea, and he would like to talk to y'all a little bit about it tonight, present it, so, Matt, if you'd like to come on up and tell them a little bit about yourself and the project.
I'm Mac Williams. I live over in Jamesford Meadows on Chesterfield Place. I have always enjoyed heading over to Run Miller Park, so I think it would be a great place to put my project. So, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to let me present here today. I think it's great that you guys let Eagle Scouts put projects in your town. I'm sure you've reviewed the proposal packet that I sent out to all of you. If there are any questions or changes you would like me to make if you want to change the design, I was thinking we could do a grass and tile texture that alternates, as seen in the very last picture in my packet, but we could also do one where instead of grass, we use turf instead of the grass to make it not have to be mowed. And then for the, and then we could also do a black and white tile texture. Instead of doing the grass, we could do black and white tiles, if that is something you'd prefer. As far as what's better about certain options, for option one, which was the grass and tiles, it's better because it has less maintenance than the other ones, because there are situations where the other ones would need pretty heavy maintenance, but the grass might thin or dry over time. For the second option, which we use turf instead of grass, it may clash with the surrounding grass because it's a different color, but the turf is also good because it doesn't need to be mowed every, every once in a while, so it would need less maintenance as far as that. And then for the concrete-only ones, it would, there's no grass to mow at all, but you would need to pull weeds out of the cracks and the, and the tiles maybe misaligned every once in a while, and so they would need to be changed whenever that happens. So that's a pretty quick summary of how my project will probably be set up. If there's any questions or statements that the board has or counsel has for me, I'm happy to add those or change anything.
Yes, Matt, I do have a question. First of all, thank you so much, and I just applaud your effort. I do see where you are proposing to start the project late winter, early spring, and you're still in school, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So what I didn't see in this very thorough proposal was when you're planning to get your hands in there too, right? With the, because what concerned me, or my, didn't concern me, I should say, what I didn't see, is when you plan to actually do the work since you're in school. So like, would that be Saturdays and Sundays after school or days off?
Sorry, do you, no, okay. Weekends would work pretty well. I could do it anytime after school, really, I have swim practice most days, but that's gonna end soon, so I'll probably be able to do it after school most days if that's, I think that's probably fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anything?
Well, one thing I think you answered in your proposal, you're proposing to put some kind of storage locker or something to put the actual checkers in?
Probably made out of wood or concrete and has a little door that the town has the key to, that they can lock or unlock for overnight keeping, and so it can be stored whenever someone's not using it.
Yeah, because you want access for the public, you know, on the weekend or whatever, to be able to get to it. And, and I know, I went and saw where you're talking about putting it there in the back there. That is a pretty flat area, and I don't know, this is just something I was thinking about, because that's grass now, which is a pervious surface, and I don't know if you put the tiles or pavers down and that makes it more of an impervious surface. If we got any concern about standing water or water running off to the houses around it, and Paul might could address that, I don't know if you've thought about that.
Well, if we do the grass and concrete design, then it would be easier for water to get through, and so it wouldn't like stand, have standing water on it.
I was thinking, as far as, I guess you would work with, with Scott about mowing, I would hate for it to be harder for the guys to mow if you have grass in between the pavers. I don't know if you're doing a weed eater over there, will it make it harder for them?
Once we figure out the final design, it'll be a little bit easier, but, and if we did the pavers, it would be raised up a little bit, so there wouldn't be any standing water issues. And it's not as big as you think. I think it's only 10 by 10.
Uh huh.
So it's not as big as you think. I don't think standing water would be an issue. The maintenance part of it shouldn't be bad either under any option, but we do have a great guy that helps us out and does bricklaying and things of that nature, and he's agreed to kind of work with us on that, and work with the scouts, kind of guide a little bit, so it'll be done really well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, you would know about the maintenance of it, what would staff would be okay with, yeah.
Is there a preferred setup?
I think with, after speaking with John Halsey, I think if we did a, did the pavers, we would put a, put a good four-inch base down and then do the pavers, and, and then maybe later, what we could do as part of it would probably, I thought about adding a curving around it to keep everything in place and nice and tight. I'm working on getting some pricing on that, but I think for the initial project, this is a great idea, and it wouldn't be a, there wouldn't be any major issues. I think the curving would just help improve it a long time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So you're really not asking any town funds, but labor, and then, of course, the brick mason to help with that. But we would take our maintenance of it from here on out and replace them if something did happen to a checker, we would have to replace that, the town.
I was thinking of maybe buying two sets of checkers, so then it would be pretty easy for the town to replace if they ever needed to.
Okay.
But then when, if they, they did get, like, several of them did go missing, then you might at some point need to buy a little set.
Right. Okay. All right. Well, it's a cool idea. Yeah, neat.
And I appreciate all the different options that you have here. That's really nice, because, you know, with, especially with Run Miller over there, it's such a multi-use space, and the Veterans Memorial and everything, it's important that it blends in and also is walkable and that type of thing. We have a lot of little kids and older folks, and we have, you know, all different ranges of people out there, so I really like that you've shown us all these different ways it can be done, that, you know, I think that you all can work together and find a way that'll be best for the community. Thank you.
Yes.
Mac, how old are you?
I'm 13.
13. I'm very impressed, and I'm not gonna grill you anymore, since these ladies already have. You've done a great job.
Yes, I've done a great job, yeah. I would make a motion to approve the proposal.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to playing checkers again. Been a long time.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Counsel, have you had a chance to review the town council meeting schedule that is in your packet? Yes.
Yes.
Any questions? Any amendments with the, we had one change before it was published?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
That was the March 19th.
That was the only change from the original one.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve it?
I move to approve the town council 2024 meeting schedule. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And now the, did you review the retreat and budget and CIP calendar for the year?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve that?
We did have one change from the one that was published in the packet, right? For that?
Yeah, the March 19th.
Yes, the March 19th.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. I move to approve that schedule for the retreat and budget meetings. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. And now Anna, where are you? We have appointments to the planning board because we have some vacancies.
Good evening. As you may have noticed, we have some vacancies on the planning board after elections. There are currently four vacancies, one regular position, two alternate positions, and one ETJ alternate position. We have six applicants for in-town positions and three for the ETJ. Counsel, I believe you received all of those applicants in the last week. The applications, staff recommend going ahead and filling all four vacancies as you see fit. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions for Anna?
No, I, I was just gonna say, for full disclosure, I was gonna say, I did call and speak to Denise Johnson, who has an application in, because she's on the Parks and Rec Committee, and I was sort of hung up on that. There's nothing, like the town manager said, there's nothing in writing where a person can't serve on two boards, but since we have such limited opportunities, I just, just called and talked to her. Plus, I do know her. And she did tell me that when she originally made application to the town, her desire was to be on the planning board, but opening came on Parks and Rec, so she wanted to be involved in, in the town, so she took that. But when she saw now there is a vacancy for planning board, she said that really was her desire, and that she would like to be on the planning board. And if you'll remember, she was on the...
She was on the comprehensive.
Steering committee with us. And of course, the planning board has to consider the comp plan whenever they make any decisions, so her, and that was like an 18-month process, I think. So anyhow, and she did say she would resign from Parks and Rec if she were appointed, so that would open up another volunteer position on there. So I give you all that, I wanted to disclose that conversation I had with her, so gladly hear everyone else's opinion, but I would certainly, my opinion would be to appoint her as the regular member on the planning board.
Do I have any further discussion?
Um, you know, as the liaison to the planning board up until last month. I have been fortunate to be able to sit in on all those meetings and lots of excitement going on there. And first of all, it's fantastic that we have this many applicants. You know, I think all of us remember not too long ago when it was not, we weren't always in this great position, so I appreciate that we have a lot of applicants and they're, you know, they are very well-qualified and all of that as well. I do feel like, again, having been liaison and seeing everything happen and seeing now that we have folks from the planning board sitting around this table, there is a loss of leadership there that we want to make sure that we fill.
They're not missing anything.
So I love that we have fresh faces and definitely support bringing some new folks on. I also feel like this would be a good time to have someone who has a history with the planning board, and looking through the list of folks within the area, the planning board applications, we do have John Capes, who was on planning board for five years before coming on council. So I would think that just for continuity's sake and making sure that we do have a good mix of new folks and then seasoned, not old, seasoned folks.
Seasoned.
I would support John being made the regular and then a person on the board, the regular person on the board, for the regular seat, and then alternates being Josie Cothran and Denise Johnson, Denise because, as Martha has said, you know, she does have that good history with the comp plan steering committee that, that needs to be considered, and then Ms. Cothran was on the bicycle pedestrian plan and has a lot of good information from there. So I really love when we have the opportunity to, to work with folks who have gotten their feet wet and gotten engaged, and will be able to bring that, that expertise to the board as well, but also still be fresh faces on there.
And I hope, I was gonna recommend her for an alternate as well. I thought it was good, she does live on Oakdale, and of course, I like when we have representatives from different areas of town, and of course, Oakdale is one we hope to have a revitalization at some time, and it would be good to have someone that lives in the community.
Any further discussion?
No. I hear both points well, and I'm conflicted myself, so.
Do I have a motion for the regular position?
Yes, I motion to appoint Denise Johnson to the planning board regular position.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. And now we need to appoint one for the out-of-town alternate.
Are you gonna do the alternates?
Well, I was just going down my, my list. Okay. The alternates.
Okay.
I need a nomination for the first alternate position.
Well, as I was just talking about Hope, and I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce her last name, do you guys know?
No, I don't.
Like I said, the reason I, one of the reasons I liked her for an alternate was, was being in the Oakdale area, and then also in her application, it looks like she talks about she has a lot of experience in problem-solving and with legal actions and contracts, and I think you guys on the planning board deal with that as well. And then Josie, I had one thing, she has all these awards for volunteerism, so she certainly has proven to be a good volunteer and take it seriously. We're just, the things that stood out for me for her, those two folks.
I was wondering, for the alternates, to Rebecca's point, I agree, I think Hope, you know, her position in the town in terms of where she lives is, is not something that, at least in my tenure on the planning board, which was 11 years, we, I don't think we ever had anyone from the Oakdale area...
Oh, really?
...on the planning board, so I think that, that could be beneficial. I was curious, though, if Denise leaves the, if she leaves the Parks and Rec Board, if Josie may be interested in that, since she was part of the pedestrian plan, and I know she's a runner, and, you know, I know they need varied interests on the Parks and Rec Board. And to Rebecca's point earlier about continuity, I'm wondering if John were an alternate, should anyone be absent? You know, he does bring that as a, because alternates, Pam can attest, alternates, you know, are not necessarily the most engaged, you have to kind of want to be engaged. Pam was, I'm confident John would as well, and he could easily step in if someone was not present and kind of know what the deal is and how, how a meeting's conducted and what the issues of the town are to easily step into that role. So that was, that was a bit of my thinking there.
Good point.
That makes sense.
Do I have a nomination for one of those positions?
I move to nominate, is it nominator, appoint John Capes as the, one of the alternates to the planning board for the regular seats.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
And I would make a motion to appoint Hope as a second alternate, and I'm going to say NG, I'm not sure if that's correct.
We'll find out.
But to appoint her as an alternate.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
And then maybe you guys can, if you know Josie, ask her if she would be interested in that Parks and Rec position.
And now we need to appoint an ETJ alternate. Any discussion?
Well, I had looked, everyone lives in Cedarwood, and again, like I say, it's great we've got three applications here. The thing that struck out to me, Susan Stringer has had a business in Jamestown for 25 years, and I would think that's her specialty, or bring that expertise to the board of representing the downtown businesses as well.
I definitely agree with that. I think that Susan would be perfect in speaking with her. She, I think she's really interested as well, and it would be wonderful to have her energy.
Yeah.
She brings good energy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that she would kind of, you know, almost fill two slots at once, too, with the business owner and ETJ, so I would support that. Yeah, and I know, you know, planning board throughout the years, and Lynn, you probably remember from when you were on, and Martha, when you were clerk, you know, we would talk a lot about the downtown area, Main Street, and how to kind of, you know, improve that and, you know, not that it's not wonderful, but if, you know, in ways that could be improved, and so since she has that unique perspective, I agree.
Do I have a motion?
I move to appoint Susan Stringer as the ETJ representative for the planning board.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. And now, Martha, would you like to present a resolution of appreciation to Mike Tester?
I would be glad to.
Mike, come on up. Come on in. How do you help me to face this? How do we do it?
Pull it.
Swing it this way.
And face the audience.
And face the audience. Why don't you come over here? How about that? Let's see if they can, can hear my low voice. Okay, resolution honoring Mike Tester. Resolution, whereas Mike Tester began leasing his current, well, service station, uh, from Harold and Martha Hall in nineteen ninety-six, and whereas Mr. Tester purchased the station in two thousand and one from Martha Hall, who was the widow of the former Jamestown mayor Harold Hall, the second mayor of the town, whereas Mr. Tester is an honest man and one of the last small-town gas station owners. He often ran the station as a one-man show, providing his customers with a full-service lane. He pumped gas, checked the oil, washed the windshield, and for those unable to do so, he especially caring for the elderly. Whereas Mr. Tester is community-oriented and took good care of his customers at a fair price, often fixing a flat tire or filling a low tire with air, he provided the community with a service of fixing small repairs up to big repairs. He epitomized customer service by always taking the time, no matter how busy, to stick his head out the door, call you by name and say, hey, how you doing? Whereas Mr. Tester was always very supportive of Jamestown and always allowed all Jamestown candidates running for office to put their election signs up at his business. He posted town civic club event flyers in his window. He stored a Jamestown Business Association Christmas parade float in his rear lot for several years, remember that? Uh, and he allowed businesses to park in his parking lot after hours. Now therefore be it resolved by I, well, Martha Wolf, council member on behalf of the mayor, Lynn Montgomery, and the other council members, uh, and the town council, do hereby express great appreciation to Mike Tester upon his retirement for his loyalty to his customers, providing the type of customer service you just don't find these days. He will be greatly missed. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be spread upon the pages of the official minute book of the town of Jamestown to stand as a tribute to Mike Tester. And we gonna miss you.
Thank you, Mike.
You're ready. Thank you. Take his picture, not mine. Hold up these, yeah, there you go. You'll be next.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's carry those chickens.
I'll do that.
Thank you, Mike. I'm still not happy.
I don't think any of us are.
Sarah, would you present the resolution?
Oh, shoot, after I take this tablecloth with me, I will.
To your planning board member.
Well, Pam, I'm sorry, but it's gonna be hard, hard to follow that, that act here. I, I don't know if I have as nice things to say for you. They all, Lynn really wanted me to use this microphone too, which I know they won't have any trouble hearing us here, so. Whereas serving the town of Jamestown as an alternate on the planning board is an act of dedication and patience, and whereas an alternate spends time waiting in the wings to step up and function as a voting member in the absence of a regular member while also attending meetings to keep up to date on items appearing before the board, and whereas citizens that volunteer for an alternate position make a great commitment knowing the importance of the position is to attend all meetings in the event their presence is needed. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Sarah Glanville, chair of Lynn Montgomery, mayor of the town of Jamestown, and the town council, do hereby extend our heartfelt appreciation and sincere thanks to Pam Burgess for her valuable, uh, service and dedication to the citizens of our community. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be spread upon the pages of the official minutes of the town of Jamestown to stand as a tribute to the service of Pam Burgess adopted this day, the sixteenth of January twenty twenty-four.
Thank you so much. You can stay up front, Sarah, because we now have a resolution for you.
It's just a round robin this time. It really is, isn't it? All right, whereas Sarah Glanville has served on the planning board since August of twenty fifteen, and whereas Ms. Glanville also served as the chair of the planning board for many years, and whereas Ms. Glanville was in her second term on the planning board when she was successful in being elected to serve on the town council, thus requiring her to resign from the planning board effective December twenty twenty-three, and whereas her performance of her duties and responsibilities on the planning board has been characterized by excellent and constructive contributions to our entire community and has earned with the respect of the planning board members and staff, now therefore be it resolved that I, Rebecca Mann Rayborn, mayor pro temp of the town of Jamestown, on behalf of mayor Lynn Montgomery and the town of, and the town council, do hereby extend our heartfelt appreciation and sincere thanks to Sarah Glanville for her valuable service and dedication to our citizens.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did have one more resolution, which I was gonna read now, but, um, Carol Anderson was not able to be with us this evening, and what she has done is pick up trash when nobody really notices what's going on out there. She went through downtown the day of the parade or the day before the parade and picked up all the trash on the entire parade route, and this is one of those things that not everybody knows about, and we wanted to, to recognize Carol for that, but her request was just tell people if they want to work with me to call Elizabeth Greason at the town hall, and she will connect us.
Oh, all right.
So we appreciate Carol's help and look forward to seeing her more. Thank you, Carol.
Wonderful.
Matthew, do you have a manager's report for us, please?
Good evening, mayor and council. Um, just a very short list of, uh, updates, a couple of our major projects that are currently underway. Uh, I wanted to let you know that the maintenance building has received a temporary certificate of occupancy.
Yay.
Uh, there's some minor warranty work that's still gonna be ongoing there, uh, so you'll see some folks there doing it, but, uh, we're one step closer, they're, they're starting to move in there. Um, golf course bathrooms, just a couple of final, final things going on there, waiting some, uh, final building inspections from Guilford County. Uh, loose leaf collection's still ongoing, I know most of the leaves have come down and most of the people have put them out and they've been picked up, uh, but we will run that up until February the twenty-third. Um, just make sure that you get them out well ahead of the February twenty-third date, because that'll be the last date that they run the, run the truck. Um, we're gonna be, we were closed yesterday due to the MLK holiday, um, and I, I wanted to make one clarification to the, uh, CIP and budget workshop agenda, that, that clarification is that the budget workshop number ele, uh, number two, uh, is March the nineteenth instead of March the twenty-second, as it showed in the packet, but there was a couple of, uh, folks that had conflicts, so we, we moved it to the March the nineteenth date. All of those meetings are here in the, in the Civic Center. Um, our very first, uh, budget retreat will be January the twenty-third, next Tuesday at nine AM here in this room. Uh, February first, we'll have bulky item pickup, uh, and February thirteenth is your next regularly scheduled town council meeting, and again, that was a, a little bit of difference because, uh, early voting for the March primary will be happening in this room, and they have that room, uh, in, on the conflict, uh, over your regularly scheduled meeting date, so we will be meeting one week earlier, uh, on February thirteenth. You have any questions for me? I'd be glad to answer them.
No questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any committee reports? I don't think we've had anything.
I have nothing. We had a, did you have? Yeah, we had a part that, um, Piedmont Area Regional Transportation meeting on January the tenth, but it was all about regional transportation, there really wasn't anything specific to Jamestown. Um, and then the next TAC meeting is actually January twenty-third, so I have told them I will not be at that meeting because Jamestown budget comes first and the mayor would shoot me if I was not at that meeting, so. I don't know, uh, they'll give me a summary, I'm sure. Um, and then it's not really a committee report, but I thought, um, it was worth noting, Pam Burgess, Sarah Glanville, the town manager, and I did attend the essentials of government training for two days, uh, was that last week?
Yeah, Thursday, Friday, no.
But, um, I thought it was great, very impressive.
It was, it was wonderful.
And the food was really great.
Yes, it was.
Gosh, they fed us. They were the grand over, they really fed us.
They had some, um, technical issues, but, um, technology's great when it's not, but anyways.
That's right.
Yeah, uh, but I, I thought it was great.
It was really good.
Good.
It was really good.
Um, I did have a PTRC meeting the day after our last council meeting, but it was basically, um, to recognize outgoing members, and so there was no new business during that meeting. That's all we've got there. Um, has anyone signed up for public comment, Nancy?
No.
Okay, and do you have any other business counsel?
I do not.
With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.